I guess I'm always first up. Margie Coroni Wyndham, I wasn't going to speak again, but after what happened at last week's school board meeting, which I felt was very disrespectful and rude, well, here I am again. I never thought I would have to say this to people who know their children are listening and watching how they behave. So when there is someone at the mic and it's their turn to speak, the audience should be courteous enough to let them finish without listening to comments and downright heckling in the background. Everyone gets a chance to speak, so please respect that. Until it's your turn, and then you can have this say. I know that I've continually heard people tell the board and administration to lead by example, so I would like to say that I would like to see everyone who speaks at this mic do the same. The other item I want to repeat, and I say repeat because it has been mentioned numerous times, is that teachers and staff are not giving or assigning the books in question to any students as it is not part of their curriculum. So please start making the teachers feel like they are being attacked. I know that you say you are not directing this towards them, but I can tell you they feel threatened, as do many students. How do I know this? Because I have heard from teachers and many parents who say their children are afraid that their club, gender, or activity will be next to be attacked. And those are their words, not mine. I know people are upset, but there is a process, as most of you know, and until there is an answer from the review committee, people should try to control their emotions for the good of all the families, staff, and children in the district. As a closing comment, I would like to suggest that the audience stay to hear what happens at school board meetings after public comment, such as the budget and how it's going to affect them, such as policies, which is how the school runs. Policies are already reviewed at school board meetings, and everybody has a chance to comment. Thank you.
Maria Clark, I'm from Wyndham. This night's lady said what I was going to say. There was a lot of heckling last week, and I'm hoping that tonight people will be civil to each other on both sides. I'd like to address something that came up right after last week's meeting. A local radio podcast said that there was a hurtful comment made toward a former Wyndham High School student who was at the podium, talking about statistics of suicide among trans teens. Apparently, it was heard to be muttered under someone's breath, "Well, maybe you should", in reference to killing themselves. Whatever was said, if it's true, the person that said it should be ashamed. We have stated over and over again that this is about pornography. We are not trying to cancel or go against any group of students. We just want the books that have pornography, that talk about sex acts and incest, out of the library. And again, please, let's be civil to each other tonight. Thank you. I don't know about this. Here it goes. Who would like to speak next?
Kristin Day Wyndham. I spoke last week about harassment in our schools being widespread, and I want to make it clear that I stand for every student who's harassed. And they are harassed for everything you can imagine. It is true that in 7th grade, my daughter was called a fucking straight and more by other students who were LGBTQ. But the key is not about one demographic or another. The key is that every student's struggle is valid and of equal importance, and none of us can know anyone's burden based on a label. I want to be clear that when this happened, I thought of it as just a mistake by a student. We didn't call the student out, but I did ask why it might have happened. I learned that the Civil Rights Team does encourage students to open conversations with other students about their group topics to spread awareness. I do not believe any group or any individual at school encourages malice, but I do think this experience could show a result of encouraging kids to talk to other kids about these private topics in school. Kids aren't equipped with judgment or training to handle these discussions any more than a teacher is. There's no policy addressing club activity. I believe social labeling results in more harassment and bullying. If kids are left to it, you get the Lord of the Flies, then no student will be safe. There is a harassment policy, but that doesn't prevent. So at the time, I did notify the principal of the issue, pleading that he address bullying in school for all kids. Some sort of program about tolerance, mix kids in together, so they team build and see each other as equals. Something like what I did when I was in middle school for a program. You know what they finally did? The middle school did run a program, but they had the kids, without parental consent, join up with one of five optional focus groups and brought in an expert to run the forums. Boys, girls, students who are Black, Asian, Hispanic, and other ethnic backgrounds, students with challenges like ADHD, learning disability, anxiety, depression, et cetera, and students who live in a home where there sometimes isn't enough money. So the middle school guided kids to essentially label themselves by demographic of choice in which group the forum leader collected information from the kids to report back to the principal. This is how schools are run now. It isn't about equality and about tolerance. It is about labeling and dividing. It goes way beyond any one program or one book. You know, know your oppression. Make it a public responsibility, not a private one. Focus on social identity rather than achievement and a strong student body community. My point last week is that all students in human struggle, and we can't prioritize any one demographic in attention or care because the result is a social divide that distracts from doing the real work, kids learning and helping every individual in need.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Ashlyn Cuthbert. I am a leader in the Wyndham Middle School Civil Rights Team. I became aware of last week's meeting Friday of an article that was posted about it. And I'd just kind of like to clear the air a little bit about what we do in civil rights and kind of what our goal is. So the goal of our civil rights team, in the middle school at least, is to make our students feel more accepted in their school environment and have their differences that make them special and not be ignored. Like Ms. Day said, we encourage opening conversations about these topics because we feel that they aren't talked about enough. And these things, what we call them categories, or civil rights categories, when combined, they make a really great community if people just start talking about it and listening to those things more. As in facts and surveys stated in last week's meeting, we do send out surveys every now and again, asking students, and these surveys are anonymous, they aren't named, their race, their identified gender, their sexual orientation, and other things that they identify with. We don't ask questions about the exact details of encounters. We just ask how they identify. And we do this because we want to get to know our fellow students and formulate a plan to help best support them. Because why would we spend energy on trying to formulate a plan based on students when those aren't even the students that we need to help? Another thing that I would like to address about last week's meeting were pronoun pins. These were not provided by the Civil Rights Team. They were provided by the GSA, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance. They were optional. It was a little table in the main hallway at the beginning of each day for one week. They were completely optional. There was no pressure to get one. They were not announced over intercoms or talked about by teachers. We didn't have students roaming the halls offering pins. They were at a table that you could have walked right by. We apologize to any students, parents, or teachers that might have felt uncomfortable by this or that they are being harassed. I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Hi. My name is Mary Trombley. I'm a Wyndham resident. I'm a parent of students at the primary, Manchester, and middle schools, and I'm an RSU-14 staff member. I would like to talk tonight about bullying. I've worked in schools for the past 15 years. Bullying and harassment is widely seen as both a serious issue and one that can greatly impact someone's physical and emotional well-being. We can all agree that bullying should not be tolerated. So why is it now suddenly okay in our town? Why is it that adults think it is fine to heckle, intimidate, follow, record, and make wild and slanderous accusations against those who disagree with them? Why is it okay to threaten parents like me, who think books belong in a library? Very few people who agree with me want to come up here and talk because it is frightening. This is nothing short of bullying and harassment. But to a finer point, it's also thinly veiled bigotry. How else could an adult, hearing a young person share that LGBTQ students are more likely to kill themselves, then say out loud in a meeting, "Maybe they should"? In case you missed it, that did happen at the last meeting. The thing is, being a teacher for the past 15 years has taught me that the kids are always listening. What we do as an adult sets an example. So maybe that explains why the kids in Wyndham Middle School, the kids are being accused of being groomers by their peers if they look different. Maybe that's why the children on an RSU-14 bus have been overheard saying to a gay peer, "If my child was gay, I would kill them." That also has happened. Look at the example that is being set. I ask everyone to listen to the message you are sending to your children. The topic of sex in books is not new, just the identities of the main characters. Please, don't claim to have nothing against LGBTQ students while also using terms like pornographic, obscene, deviant, indecent, predatory, dangerous, and smut to describe stories about their journeys. The kids hear those words too, and it is bullying. Again, all of this is nothing short of harassment. It is now normal for staff members like myself to be afraid to attend school board meetings, for teachers to be doxxed and followed outside of school. Staff members all worry that standing here in support of our most vulnerable students will result in accusations of being sexual predators. Talk about impacting physical and emotional well-being? We are adults, and we are afraid. What about the children in the RSU-14 school district who identify as gay, transgender, non-binary, or heck, just different?
Thank you.
We can't let the bullies win.
Hi, I'm Crystal Ash Cuthbert. I live here in Wyndham. I have a few points to make tonight. Thinking about my own child, if my daughter checks out any book from either our public library or school library, it's because she's curious, and I encourage that in my home. She might check out a book because she wants to understand her friends and where they're coming from and how they feel, and that's also encouraged in my home. If she wants porn, she's not going to the library. It's right here. And we're not talking about banning cell phones. As a parent of a 14-year-old, I can make decisions for her. There's a policy in place that allows me to exclude my child from reading or checking out any material that I don't believe are appropriate for her. It is inappropriate for me to push for any decision for anyone else's child, not yours, not yours, and surely not yours. It is the same policy that establishes how books are chosen for libraries, curriculum resources, and classrooms. It also outlines the steps that need to be taken to challenge the appropriateness of books. I've read the policy. It is fair, and it is reasonable. It gives all stakeholders a voice at the table. This is not the appropriate place. It is imperative that the RSU-14 school board continue to follow this well-thought-out policy. You should not be swayed by the mob mentality that has been persuasive in our town the last several months. As a citizen of this town for over 25 years, I believe this vocal group represents a minority, not the majority of how our fellow citizens feel. Number two, and I know that there are a lot of people listening at home, many of them I'm going to address right now. To our librarians, teachers, support staff, our students, fellow citizens and parents who have been the recipients of disrespectful words or actions because of this "ban the books" movement, please accept my deepest apologies. The venomous, hurtful, appalling emails, social media posts, and public comments are unacceptable. As a society, our ability to disagree respectfully has not been evident in our town as of recent. I encourage all of us to hold each other to a higher standard of behavior than we have shown recently.
Hello, I'm Kaylee Bosmas. My husband and I are Wyndham residents, and we have three children. One in the high school, a three-and-a-half-year-old who attends a Joyful Noise Christian Childcare Center, and a ten-week-old brand-new baby. I attended last week's meeting after hearing about the books in question. Upon leaving, it was extremely clear to me that not only did I need to return to this week's meeting, but I needed to speak up and let my voice also be heard. I'll start by saying that my husband and I were not aware of any of these books being placed in the middle school or high school libraries. Had we known ahead of time or been given the option ahead of time, we would have absolutely followed the correct procedures and policies to try to ensure that said books would not have been placed in the middle school or high school libraries. I'm a woman of God and faith. I'm a woman who believes in right and wrong. I'm a woman who believes in fighting for what is right. And not knowing or having the option to place my opinions or concerns about these books before they remain available to our students is 100% wrong in my book. Regardless of the content, a parent has a right to know what schools are exposing to their children before they do it. With that being said, I would also like it to know that I do not condone book banning, and I am not asking for these books to be banned. I have absolutely nothing wrong with the LGBTQ community. I love all humans. And on a further note, I would love nothing more than for everyone to come to a common ground, as I wholeheartedly believe that every child needs a safe support system in school. But if they're going through something as serious as an identity crisis or having sexuality confusion, this is something that needs to be very closely monitored and guided by a mature, licensed, non-biased professional adult who can then make recommendations about certain materials for families to read together if the parents choose. Those materials would still be available for families to obtain because this is not a bullying. You can get it in the public library, you can get it online. Yes, porn is available on phones, but you can also block websites as you do in schools so children can't get down to the websites that are not appropriate for them. Again, I do not want, I do want and believe that children should have support in our school systems, but this is certainly not the way. And as a parent, I'm sitting here telling you, I'm willing to discuss and explore options. I'm not sitting here saying, "Ban books." I'm sitting here saying, "Let's have a discussion and come to a common ground." I'm sitting here telling you I have faith we can do better. We can do better than this bullying, everything, everything everyone is talking about. It can be different. I'm telling you, I am, and I will continue to show up for our children. So here I am.
Good evening. Oh, gosh, that's loud, sorry. My name is Samantha Clark. I'm a Wyndham resident of eight and a half years, as well as a self-employed business owner right here in Wyndham. I have three boys in the Wyndham schools. One in high school, one in middle school, and one in the primary school. If you know me, you know I'm quite the shy, quiet introvert, but I can't be quiet anymore. I'm so beyond frustrated that it's this difficult to keep sexual explicit, I can't even talk, sorry, sexual explicit books out of the schools. I'm not one to ban books, but I just believe that pre-K through 12 schools are not the place for books like these, as well as books being required to read in their classes. My sister-in-law graduated from Wyndham in 2020, and one of her classes was required to read The Handmaid's Tale. It's a popular book, a popular show, and I'm sure most everyone here is aware of what that book is about. It's very inappropriate for school-age kids to be reading. There is currently another book being read this year in an English class called The Winter's Bone. Here's a little snippet from this book. "Gail, acting as a man, pushed her backwards onto a blanket of pine needles in shade and slipped her tongue deep into me's mouth. Ree found herself sucking on the wiggling tongue of the man in her mind, sucking that plunging tongue of the man in her mind until she tasted morning coffee and cigars, and spit leaked from between her lips down her chin." There's a lot more gross description, but I just don't feel comfortable reading that aloud. Why are these books, books like these, with their smaller language, sexual talk, actions, and our schools being required to read? There's millions of books out there, and I know Wyndham can do better with our book selections. Please, don't be pushing such inappropriate things on our kids. School is to prepare our kids for their future, so please, just teach my kids math, proper English, and science. Why not educate them on jobs and managing money and important things they'll need to know how to do when they are finished with high school? Please do the right thing.
Hi, my name is Doris Meehan. I've been a resident of Wyndham for 52 years this month. I'm here to express that I'm just saddened that the children are being modeled a view of human physical design that is so disrespectful of it. Among the biological functions of the human body, sexuality is the most powerful. Sexual intercourse causes the body to create hormones that affect the mind as well as the body. It also, and this is why it's said to be the most powerful, can create a brand-new, separate, and unique being with DNA, fingerprints, and even eyes that are unique from any other human being that has ever lived or any that ever will live again. Sexual activity, when exposed to a human brain that is not ready or willing to participate in it, can also cause irreparable harm that can last a lifetime. Sexual intimacy is far more than a fun recreational activity. It is by design meant to be an intimate, non-public expression of love between two people who intend to remain in that love. It even creates the same hormone that bonds a nursing mother to her baby. Ideally, two people who, should a new life be created by their union, will raise that new life in a home where it can experience the vast benefits of an intact family. I'm saddened that these precious and beautiful children are being exposed to sexual knowledge and images for which they are not ready. The images we are encouraging them to see cannot be unseen. The attitude of disrespect gives them a false sense of what human function of sexual intimacy is like. For those parents who want to protect the innocence of their children until they're ready for this knowledge, RSU-14 schools are purposefully removing that parental fate. When a student is offered, for example, when a student is offered a more graphic copy of sexual material he has run across by his own admission that makes him a little uncomfortable, it seems to me that that board is on psychological abuse. It's not just a book or two that parents are concerned about, nor is it perhaps the most talked about book happens to be homosexual expression.
Thank you very much.
My name is Ivy Melony. Allowing sexually explicit materials and placing one protected class over another under the guise of the rainbow is causing tension in the LGBT community.
Excuse me, just a minute. Where are you from?
From here.
From Wyndham?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it is segregating children on how they identify. This is placing students that identifies LGBTQ and those questioning at a higher risk than those who don't identify as such. I am a member of the LGBT community, and I am mortified that these sexually explicit books are what you have chosen to be pushed upon students to reflect what this community is about and to aid those that may be questioning their sexuality. These books do not represent the LGBT community and are misleading in a potentially unhealthy direction that could have damaging results in many aspects. Pushing pornography books and indoctrinating children in particular lifestyle while they are still discovering life and who they are is grooming. Having to stand here before you and tell you all this is demoralizing. You are embracing everything my community has fought for. Why are sexually explicit books being pushed about the LGBTQ, and why aren't the same type of books being pushed about heterosexuals? What do you even have in comparison? Please explain what educational value these types of books hold as to why it is so important for you to defend or want in our schools. Children deserve to just be kids, and your focus needs to be prioritized on their core academics, which test scores prove that. Did you even take into consideration that exposure to sexually explicit materials may lead a child to normalize and become desensitized to higher behaviors, shaping a child's expectation in relationships, blurring boundaries, and increasing a child's risk of victimization? For children without an understanding of healthy sexuality, exposure to pornographic materials, especially violent porn, incest, rape, can be traumatic. Asking people how they sexually identify with their pronouns are providing references and displaying sexually explicit materials can, in its harassment, sexual harassment if it is offensive to one, creating safe spaces, displaying flags, posters, et cetera, that only identify LGBTQ students and excluding students who don't identify as such is discriminatory and exclusive. Your exclusive in equity policies and materials are placing one protected class over another is excluding protected classes, which is a direct violation of the Main Human Rights Act, which we are all equal under the law. Implementing policies and procedures that exclude a child's parents or legal guardians and persuading students to keep secrets from them is an overreach of both their rights. I advise you to read the Protection of Pupil Rights in FERPA that is found on the U.S. Department of Education government's website. Your decision impacts the health and well-being of students, which can cause irreparable damage to their academic futures. As board members, your job is to remain non-biased to ensure that all students' rights are being equally protected. Calling people anti-gay, anti-trans, or expressing concern reflect poorly upon our school's morals in an unsophisticated, inappropriate manner and sends a message that biased opinions won't ensure equity for everyone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kylie Morell, and I have two children in the Wyndham school system, one at Wyndham Primary and one at Wyndham Middle School. We moved to Wyndham in October of last year from Caribou, Maine, where I had become an active speaker at school board meetings during COVID. COVID opened my eyes to many issues and areas of my life and my children's lives for which I had become complacent. I assumed that by sending my children to public school, which in Caribou was composed of many of the same teachers who taught both my husband and I, that our children would receive the same quality education. I now see that that could not have been farther from the truth. Our education system has become a joke. I see kids dressed in PJs to attend school, librarians handing out porn to minors, and teachers pretending to be medical professionals. As educators and elected school board members, many of you have become more focused on masks, vaccines, gender identity, and sexual orientation than education. And all those things have one thing in common: they have segregated us as a society. Masks versus no masks, vaccinated versus unvaccinated, and reality versus fantasy, and has made our differences more exaggerated, which in turn has caused more division than inclusion. I want to make my stance abundantly clear. Gay pride flags, gender identity posters, and
Gay pride flags, gender identity posters, and pornographic books have no place in the school. I was told by an administrator at Wyndham Middle School that these flags make people feel included and give them a sense of belonging. This is a completely false statement because my 13-year-old son feels the opposite, and frankly, I feel the same way. I see the great gay pride flag as a symbol of hate and division. The same businesses displaying gay pride flags stating "all are welcome," "all are included," "be nice and be kind" are the same businesses that not too long ago had signs saying "no mask, no entry," "no vaccine, no entry." They even wished harm upon the unvaccinated. So am I included, and am I really welcome, or do I have to meet certain criteria for me to be accepted? Do you see by focusing so hard on making one class of people feel like they belong, you are segregating a whole nother class of people? So no, the gay pride flag does not make me or my children feel included, and I request its immediate removal from all classrooms. And please do not insult my intelligence by with process jargon, as this does not require a process, just a ladder. A person can change their location, alter their appearance, and make every attempt to change their gender, but one thing remains the same: you are still you. Without addressing the root of the issue, whether it be bullying, negative self-talk, or just growing pains in general, nothing is going to change. You cannot outrun the person inside, and 100% acceptance and inclusion is an unrealistic benchmark. Kids need goals and things to look forward to when they wake up in the morning. They need an education that gives them purpose and smart goals they can achieve. We have veered so far from this path, and enough is enough.
Cindy Harris, I live in Wyndham. I just wanted to piggyback, that was a great segue into this poster that is posted all over the Wyndham High School and in all students' faces. And I'm gonna read it in case parents don't know this. It's posted everywhere in the school. It says, "This is a safe and inclusive space for lesbians, gay, bisexual, and transgender students." Where's heterosexuals? This is not all-inclusive? This is offensive to heterosexuals? And isn't the school liable for all students to be safe? Not just gender-specific? So these need to be taken down, because again, you're dividing students, you're building a wall. You're building a wall that's getting so big, you're not gonna be able to take down. So I urge you to take that.
Anybody else?
My name is Nicole Varney, and I'm from Wyndham. We can all see that passion is one thing that either side is not lacking when speaking at this podium. However, with that passion comes a lot of emotion, and sometimes coming from an emotional standpoint can cause the lines of logic to blur. We are not here to talk about feelings, we are here to fix a broken system. To me, being here tonight is more than the removal of two books from our school libraries. We need to draw the lines between what's allowed and what is not allowed in our schools and have fairness across the board for our children and students. I came to last week's school board meeting specifically for the fact I do not believe children should have access to literature with sexually explicit images or content. But listening to the public comment, I was informed about a few other topics that really bothered me, and these topics were confirmed to me by the students who attend our school system. I understand that we can't please everyone, and there's gonna be uncomfortable moments in conversation in schools, but there needs to be lines drawn from what is right and wrong. And currently, we have very fuzzy lines for what is allowed in our schools, and it is not fair for the students or parents. We, as parents and community members, can't and won't back down on protecting our children. This fight is gonna be repetitive and tiresome, but nothing's gonna change unless we make change happen by standing together and removing all the unnecessary garbage from our schools. I am here tonight to tell you, I'm gonna continue coming to every school board meeting, I'm gonna continue to fight for my children, and I'm gonna continue to spread truth about what's happening inside our schools, unlike the school system and local media. The removal of the books in the library is just the tip of the iceberg. There is an agenda being pushed, and it is affecting our children. You school board members and Superintendent Howell are just puppets on a string doing what you are told. You were elected to represent the community's voice in public education and to set the standard of education in our schools. You are failing at both those roles. Until you can find your conscience and make the changes that are necessary in the best interest of our children's education and safety, I can assure you that we are not gonna back down.
Hi, my name's Scott, I'm from Wyndham.
Scott, your last name, please.
McDonald.
Thank you.
My three minutes starts now, correct?
It sure does.
I just wanna say that this wasn't an oversight, this isn't, you know, a mistake. This is what Wyndham has to offer our students now. When I see the contempt on your faces for some of the parents, it's incredible to me. The only thing anybody can do, get your kid out of there. We need to have school choice where we can, our money, our tax money that goes to each kid follows that kid to a school that we would have our kids at. Until then, you guys gotta get your kids out of there. They're only gonna, you gotta do whatever you can do to get your kids out of there. They're not safe. This is on purpose. They are being separated, they're being pushed against each other race-wise, sexuality-wise, everything else. I spoke last week, I think I made it very clear. It had nothing to do with any orientation or anything else. I don't want my kids watching straight porn or any other kind of porn, that's, reading it. This is acceptable to this school. I want your people to realize this. Get your kids out of there as quick as you can, and let's make a difference so we can bring them back in. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, Ken Clark, Wyndham. And I just wanna follow up on that, because it's, porn is illegal, folks, and it's illegal for a reason. And I'm just curious, on the board, by a show of hands, how many people up there are going to show my daughter sexually explicit material without me knowing it? Any of you? And we can confess right now, if we're gonna. Okay, so if you're not, then how come you're condoning it in the library? You're putting it in there. You folks are the kingpins, you actually distribute it to others to hand to our children. You're condoning it. If you did that across the street, you'd be arrested. So, the responsibility of selection of materials. The superintendent, in consultation with administrators and professional staff, is responsible for selecting instructional materials and library-meeting materials to implement the learning results and support of the curriculum. You're teaching our kids pornography. That's what it comes down to, and you're willingly doing it, and that's sad. What's really sad is one of the laws that you're working your way around is that we research that, because it's a cartoon and supposedly educational, that makes it okay to do in the school. Think about it. You're doing it because of a cartoon. I know of a cigarette company called Camel that marketed their cigarettes the same way, to addict kids. So again, you're using cartoons and proud of it, apparently, that you found a way to do this and get this into our school system. vape companies also use bubblegum flavors to get kids attracted to nicotine. You're using cartoons to get kids to watch porn, and you're doing it, and you're skirting the laws, and you're actually proud of it. It's sad. How are you gonna bring the school back to an institution of high academics, strong morals and ethics and integrity? And again, we hear that division, 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 this group, that group. If everyone remembers Michael Jordan's famous marketing thing, it's gotta be the shoes, this has gotta be the porn. That's what we're talking about. People have the right to live their life the way they want. I talked to gay people today, I know a lot of them. It's fine to know some beautiful people back there, Ivy. And you're just causing division. And it's about the porn. It's illegal, it's wrong, and it's harmful. It's graphic nature. It's gross, and I'm, is that it? Oh. And I just can't believe it's going on. And I go on on that, but I really did not want to bring up another subject, which has come to fruition just recently, is that males are allowed in the female bathrooms in the high school and the middle school. Please think about that. That means that my daughter can be in the bathroom, and someone, a boy, can come in with a penis, expose himself in the bathroom. So now, that to me is like real life. Hey, we got real-time sexuality going on here. Fantastic, you're condoning that as well. And you're using the same laws, a whole nother bunch of fact sheet on U.S. Department of Educational Policy transgender students. This says, "Schools covered by the policy that get federal funding." A school receives federal funding if it gets federal grants contracts. So as long as you do these things, you continue to get federal funding. One of them is restrooms and locker rooms. And the guidance makes clear that students have the right to use restrooms and locker rooms-
Thank you very much.
...that match their gender identity.
CJ?
Courtney Edwards, Wyndham, Maine. Title V, Chapter 337, Part 4592, Unlawful Public Accommodations. The same laws that require schools to accommodate the trans community are indeed the same laws that also should be protecting heterosexuals. Both are protected classes under the Discrimination Laws and the Main Human Rights Act. RSU 14 is in fact placing children in unhealthy and potentially dangerous situations. Your district chose to adopt and allow this to happen because the policy is tied to receiving federal funding. Your district isn't even monitoring the students that one day decide to be a male or vice-versa a female entering the opposite genders bathrooms. This is very concerning, and I suggest you stop this predatory issue now, before you have a situation that involves an extremely large lawsuit on your hands. While scanning through your policies, I came across nondiscriminational, equal opportunity, and affirmament actions. Well, it's pretty clear that the district only protects one group of people and not the heterosexuals. Now, why are you even allowing this? And why aren't these bathrooms being monitored to make sure that safety is the number-one priority? We're all aware of what happened in Loudoun County when a 15-year-old boy raped his female classmate inside a trans-friendly female bathroom and assaulted a second after switching schools. That superintendent has been fired for his handling of the matter. Again, this school is placing students in unhealthy and potentially dangerous situations. My suggestion would be to stop this now, before it's too late. You are playing a wild game of Russian roulette. You have already crossed the line with your so-called educational cartoon porn, and if, and if, um, hold on, if you're that hard up to receive federal funding to allow this type of content and allow this type of stuff to be happening within our schools, I can't help but think, but the next thing will be offered to you guys for then you just to get a little extra money.
Hi, I'm Tom Boatman. I live here in Wyndham. I think probably a lot of us have cell phones for our kids, and I think probably a lot of us have internet at home that we're paying for, for our kids. And to all the parents who wanna claim that books in the library are the source of dirty pictures for their children, I would ask the question, do you have internet in your home? Do you pay for it? Do you pay for cell phones for your kids? Because if there is a child who wants to find dirty pictures, they're gonna find them in 2.6 seconds on the internet on their phone that's in their pocket. They're not gonna go to the school library looking for pornography. That is just not going to happen. Kids don't do that. The other thing that I wanted to say was that trying to ban certain books from school libraries, trying to decide what should be available in those libraries, you claim that you're acting to protect the children without considering the harm that you can inflict on kids like my son and like a lot of other sons and daughters that are trans, are bi, are gay, who hear this as an attack on them personally. Sending the message that queer and trans subjects are unfit for children, many of whom are struggling with gender identity, can alienate these kids and subject them to bullying and discrimination by their peers. And I just wanna ask, if we're gonna regress to a time when books are publicly burned and banned, a time when gay bashing was a high school norm? I don't want our state to emulate states like Tennessee. I don't want our town to emulate places where these children are forced to the, like, outside of society and told that they are wrong and should not exist. And that's the kind of message that's being sent tonight. Thank you.
Hello, I am DJ from Dron Small Middle School, and it's ridiculous that these books are allowed at schools. Those books are inappropriate for people and kids at schools. And to learn about this inappropriate stuff by, they should be learning it by their parents, not by some stupid books. It's not the book's job, it's the stu-, oh, it's the parent's job.
Kurt Jorgensen from Wyndham. I just wanna bring to your attention that the main state legislature, Title 17A, Main Criminal Code, specifically talks about possession of sexually explicit material. Intentionally or knowingly transporting, exhibiting, purchasing, possessing, access to view any book, magazine, newspaper, print, negative slide, motion picture, computer data file, et cetera, et cetera, for anyone who is under 16 is considered a felony. So you guys are personally giving out books to children and committing a crime. There should be, it doesn't have anything to do with LGBTQ, doesn't have anything to do with being straight or anything like that. You're giving books that have images that are sexually inappropriate. This is an age thing. If you look at Amazon and you look up this specific book, it says you have to be 18 or older to view it. So I think what you guys need is some sort of stopgap, this microphone's crazy, you need some sort of stopgap to be able to say, hey, look, if I'm a student, I come in and I wanna take out the book, you have to ask that student, did you get permission from your parents because you're not 16, you're not 18, you're 12? My son, who recently read a book, Who's 12?, in the middle school, a book that your school gave to him, felt uncomfortable about some of the language in the book, and he came to me and told me afterwards. When I talked to the principal about these books, including some of the ones we're talking about tonight, I was told that I have to come and talk to you guys about it. I don't know what these books are. You need to provide me a list of what's going in the curriculum for these students. I'd be more than happy to say, yeah, I don't want him to read that book. It's fine if other people wanna take it out, but I don't. I think I should be able to have that right, just like I can control what my son can look on, on his phone. It shouldn't be a free-for-all. I shouldn't be able to have my son come home one day and say, hey, Dad, look what book I found. You guys have the ability to be able to stop that, still have the freedom of speech, still have the ability for everyone to look at these books if they're age-appropriate. This is the theme. It's not the topic, it's age-appropriate. I don't want my son to open up a book that has a picture of somebody giving a blowjob, whether it's a cartoon or an actual image. It states in the law in the state of Maine that you can't do that, and it's a felony. So take that and put it in the books.
Hi, my name is Lynn Butterfield, I'm a Raven resident. That was my 12-year-old that just spoke. I'm not sure if anyone is aware, but the human brain does not reach full maturity until the age of 25. So making these books available to kids does nothing but confuse them. There should be a qualified counselor and/or teacher that kids can go to if they have questions, if they can't go to their parents. These books should not be available for young students. I feel like the person who should have looked over the contents of these books before they were added to the library should be questioning themselves as to whether they should even have a job at this point. Passing the buck on to someone else is unacceptable. The agenda being forced on 80% of the students is unacceptable and needs to stop. School is for learning, reading, writing, math, life skills, et cetera. Unfortunately, these are not being taught. My son, who is in sixth grade, is reading at a fourth-grade level, and he is in a fifth-grade math. During the pandemic, when we were all homeschooling our kids, I jumped him two grade levels in reading alone. That should tell you something. I'm not a teacher. So, since your assessment levels are extremely low, you would think you would be pushing that instead of the agenda that you're pushing now. Question, which I know won't be answered, but how many kids should be enrolled in a public school for them to stay open? What would happen if 75% of the student population within this school district did not enroll next year? I would think you would have to close the schools down, which would make a lot of unemployed staff. Thank you.
I'm Dani Davis, I'm from Wyndham, and I'm not sure what else we have to say to get it through, that this goes beyond the porn books in the library, and also that we're following a policy created by the- by the board, not book banning. I wasn't really prepared with the speech tonight. I'm just kind of like tired of all of this. This has been a long time. We've all put our heart and souls into this. We spend a lot of time on this, and it's not just the speaking, it's not just, we read policies, we read laws, we talk to doctors, we talk to lawyers, we talk to Chris, we talk, we talk to the whole school board. We email a lot, like, we are all emailing all day long, very close by now. Probably sick of us, I'm sure. But I would love to see an inkling of effort from the district, from the superintendent, from the board, effort that shows you're willing to work together. Some of us parents, we're concerned about what's happening in our schools. We're all educated individuals, very fine-tuned and skilled in abilities to be able to achieve a goal. We could be of help, but the lack of willing to work with us and instead try to silence us and shut us down, make false accusations, is concerning and doesn't lead us to believe that you want what's best for our kids. Kids should be above all, above power, above money, above reputation, above backlash. I have no doubt that most of us, school, parents, community, really do want what's best for our kids, and we need to work together on this because we all know it's coming from above. It's coming from beyond the district, coming from beyond the MDOE, and we need to work together to stop this all. First, it's the books hidden in the library, it's counselors going into our classrooms, it's SEL being in the curriculum. Probably sounds crazy that I'm mentioning this stuff. More to come later on down the line. After the community involvement and input, it's clear the majority does not want this type of material in the schools or libraries or being implemented into the curriculum, SEL. We have policies that were created by the school board, and they need to be revised. And it's not just the book selection. Listen to us now, let's come together, let's make better things for this school, better things for you, better things for your kids, my kids, all our kids. We need to get back on track.
Hello, my name's Scott McDowell, 17, Wyndham. Do you hear all these parents that care about their kids? And you just heard an 11 and a 12-year-old in the last three weeks explaining what these books are and how bad they are, rude, disrespectful, and inappropriate. You need to get these out of the schools because, one, these parents care about their kids, and the second ones that supposedly care about their kids can leave it at their house. There's their time and a place. And I'm 17, and I'll be the third kid in the last three weeks, and I am sick and tired of it. And I don't want anybody from K through 12, eight, or sorry, six through 18, learning these books. It's not appropriate, it should not be allowed, period. And it's about time you guys step your game up and actually learn how to care for these parents and everybody who accepts everybody for who they are. And I mean, it's really sick and tired, I'm sick and tired of how, just blow it all off, blow it all by. But these books are here forever in these kids' minds if they read them. And do not, and they all pay attention, oh, but you don't have to write an essay about them. You should be actually, freshman, freshman year, you should be writing essays about what you have to really do. Sorry about that. And it's really, really antagonizing when, oh, you don't know how to write a proper essay. You're getting, you're going to fail your class because of, oh, because it's bull crap. And I, obviously, the last four years I went to Wyndham schools, it turned into a joke. I was, I was homeschooled most of my life, and then blah, next year, and this year. And I'm serious, all these kids need to, all these parents need to listen to what their kids are saying, and if it's not appropriate for schools, get them out.
Hello, I'm Stephen DiPaolatano from Wyndham. Our public school system is broken. Homeschooling is exploding in the district. Good teachers are quitting for being forced to teach social-emotional learning and forced to support sexual explicit content with minors. Biological boys are now allowed in the girls' US-14 bathrooms. The Nick and Charlie book, overwhelming graphic sex act, some of the excerpts. "We should get drunk, stealing parents' wine, drinking vodka lemonade. I want a drunk hookup in the bathroom later. I quickly discover drunk issues are not fun when one person is sober. It doesn't take a lot to get me drunk, which is extremely useful for situations like this where year 13s are everywhere. Have sex in pillow forts. Got to bang as many people as you can." The words cock and dick are used multiple times, the F-word 21 times, the S-word 12 times. What type of education are we paying for here? What is happening in the Wyndham Middle School? Are we proud of this? Solution is very simple. It's already in the public library. There's easy access, there's a path from our campus over there. They have wonderful employees over there that are willing to help. There's all kinds of books there for people to identify, and the parents are connected to the accounts. There's the difference, okay? That's the bigger picture than the books. Here, the parents are excluded. Over there, the parents have the option to be part of working with the public library. These are our children. These are teachers' students. So please focus on academics, arts, music, and sports. A year ago tomorrow is when the book challenge policy, the IJJ, was adopted, when Mr. Howell had sold the school board on it. You can go back and watch that video. Why was that needed back then? Were we having all kinds of parents complaining about books? I don't think so, but Mr. Howell knew why. Mr. Howell was part of the Sibego Alliance group where the superintendents around the surrounding towns, all school districts, talked to each other, and he was well aware of what was going on with Barney Eagle and some other towns. So I'm going to say this, we will not stop attending. We will not stop FOAs. We will not stop the book challenges until we restore the academic integrity and the personal safety of our school. Thank you.
My name is Scott Mealy. I was born and raised in Wyndham. I have four kids, and three of them are in the Wyndham school system. I was at the school board meeting last week when many parents were voicing their opinion about the book Gender Queer. I didn't speak last week because I didn't have anything written down, and I wanted to make sure that my thoughts were clearly conveyed. First, I want to address the book. It is obviously inappropriate. It is difficult for me to comprehend how adults who are responsible for the care of children could allow something this sexually graphic into the school. Some people at the meeting last week tried to defend these kinds of books by saying that gender-confused kids need resources like this. I'm here to tell you, no, they don't. No child needs a resource telling them about wearing a strap-on or performing oral sex or tasting their own vaginal fluids. No child needs this. My question to the board is, where is the line? If this book does not cross the line for what is considered wrong and inappropriate for schoolchildren, what does cross the line? What if the book was called Straight Girl, and it showed a girl performing oral sex on someone? Would that be crossing the line? Of course it would, and everyone, including all of you on the board, would agree that that is crossing the line. But because the book is focused on talking about gender ideology and LGBT issues, suddenly, it's not only acceptable but a necessary resource for these kids. What if a man wanted to come to the school and talk to students about their sex lives and what makes them aroused? We would all be rightly horrified, and none of you would have a problem condemning such a disgusting behavior. Now, what if it was a trans woman talking to students about their sex lives and what makes them aroused? Would you have the same horrified disgust? For some reason, when anything is done in the name of gender or LGBT rights, it is seemingly untouchable. There is nothing that crosses the line. If you don't put a stop to stuff like this, it is only going to get worse and more graphic and more harmful for kids. Yes, there is a slippery slope, but the problem is, we have already fallen off the cliff. We are giving pornographic materials to minors. We are way past the slope. The problem you face is the next time something like this happens and you know it's wrong, you won't have a leg to stand on because you have already given in. It's a runaway train that can't be stopped. If you can take a stand now, it will make it much easier to stop stuff like this in the future. The gender movement has made huge waves in our culture and has obviously seeped into the schools. I'm just begging you for some common sense. Be the adults in the room, and remember that sometimes the adults have to say no. Thank you.
Jennifer Cushman, Raymond, Maine. I have a daughter who's a senior at the high school here. I'm just going to read a couple excerpts from the Journal of Psychiatry from December 7th, 2021. "Early Exposure to Pornography: A Form of Sexual Trauma." "Many years ago, a young father in his 20s was getting in trouble with the law because of repeated inappropriate exposure in his genitals and the public. He also had explosive outbursts with destruction of property. During the first sessions with him, I was struck by his juvenile, almost childlike expression with incongruent affective regarding his behavior, probably stemming from a lack of insight. His poor ability to deal with the frustration, to regulate the anger and impulses indicated some form of developmental arrest. Months and another child later, after gradually investigating his past and trying to understand what had led to his dysregulated sexuality, he eventually disclosed that when he was a child, his dad made him watch pornography. It was disturbing to try to imagine the effect of potentially overwhelming, arousing, but also degrading images on a forming, innocent brain. Unlike erotic scenes in a movie or nude sculptures in a museum, pornography generally involves power, dynamic humiliation, and a disertation of the reality around the body and sexuality. In my opinion, it is a form of sexual trauma, just like when seeing a car accident or parental domestic abuse can be traumatic for the observer. Exposing children to pornography should be forbidden and better regulated, as it is violating their spiritual boundaries and evolving beliefs around sexual development and intimate relationships in a similar way that is very direct abuse on their bodies. If this trauma is not identified and processed promptly, the survivor runs the risk of reenacting as an attempt to resolve what once left him or her powerless, or even engaging in similar criminal behaviors. Or one may trivialize that what is considered sacred by many, hence squandering delicate soul facets of oneself, engaging in promiscuous, high-risk sexual activities. American Bar Association points out how pornography harms children, normalizes sexual harm, promotes aggression towards women, shapes negative attitudes and behaviors towards women, affects healthy intimate relationships, can lead to addiction." And now, what are the lawyers going to do? Be aware that exposure to pornography is a possibility. Let this be said, the greatest commandment is to love. What is the definition of love? An intense feeling for deep affection. What does love do? When you love something or someone, you desire to protect it, nurture it, and watch it grow into a healthy, strong, that is true for humanity, or plants, both living things created by a creator, to reproduce healthier, stronger after their own kind. My charge to you would be this. School board, proceed with strong caution as to the influence you've been given for these little ones. Parents, continue to show up for your children. They're ultimately your priority, not the schools.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time's up.
Hi, Jen Moore, Raymond. This is an awful lot of hoopla about two books that we heard last week have been taken out twice, right? So this is not, these aren't books that are widely distributed by any means. First of all, thanks to the board, teachers, librarians, who have been on the receiving end of a lot of unnecessary negativity. I listened to the meeting last week, and I truly tried to listen to understand both sides. It was challenging, more, most, I was just disheartened to hear how polarized our communities become. And for being honest here, nobody would have even heard of Gender Queer if it hadn't been part of the Republican Party agenda. And you might remember, the reason we're tying it to LGBTQ is because it all came out when the Don't Say Gay bill in Florida was brought forth. To couch your concerns around porno feels like an obvious tactic to me, as it was made clear by the way the audience heckled anyone that spoke up for the LGBTQ community last week. And to heckle a kiddo who is brave enough to speak up is obscene. I thought we had common ground around a love for kids until I heard that. And this is not porn for good. It is a comic strip. We've seen a lot worse, and we heard someone last week nicely articulate all the literature, the Bible, other books that are, that are just as racy. So, you know, where do you draw the line? Where, this isn't Russia, China, North Korea, we are the USA. We, we, where we have freedoms, that's what the country was built upon, our freedoms, freedom to get information at the public library or on the internet. And, you know, where, again, where could you draw this line? There's racy, you call this comic strip porno, I believe, because it doesn't depict a heterosexual relationship. And what are you so afraid of? How can it possibly concern you if others identify as non-binary or gay and thinking that a book or a teacher can indoctrinate a kid is ludicrous? What kid would sign up for the hate and intolerance that they have to endure? You claim you don't have an issue, that materials just don't belong in the schools. You speak about parents' rights to be involved. You can opt out of materials now based on current policy. So why take this option away from the entire community? Again, it's clear the issue is not really around that. It's about fear and hate, not your right to parent, which still exists, you have this. You talk about saving the children, but denying them access to materials that they can, that they can perhaps see themselves in promotes isolation, as we heard. And religion, really? Why not read passages that talk about incest, rape out of the Bible, pillaging of communities? What happened, I was raised Christian, what happened to red, yellow, black, and white? We are all precious in God's sight. Not this group, not that group. It's everybody. And, you know, much like a lot of people didn't understand why Black Lives Matter, they mattered because they were being ignored, and that's what's happening with LGBTQ, and that's why you're hearing the focus. It's not that we don't love all the kids, but it's a, it's a group that's underrepresented. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jennifer White, and I own a Joyful Noise Christian Daycare and Learning Center here in town. I have a question. How do you opt out when these books are sitting on a library shelf? You can opt out when they're in a classroom, when they're on your curriculum list, but when they're sitting on a shelf and your child goes into that library in the school, there's no opting out. So let's get real here. And I also have another question. Why do taxpayers have to be forced to homeschool their kids? That's a shame. That is unacceptable to me. If you pay taxes, you should be able to send your child to school, and you should have confidence in the parent-teacher relationships, in the school board, in the principal, and in the superintendent. And what I'm hearing here is that we have double standards going on. We can treat some particular kids a certain way and other particular kids and families a different way. It doesn't work that way. Everybody should be treated the same. And you're hearing parents coming up here time and time again, and they have issues with the books that are being on the library shelves. What is the school board going to do about that? How many more weeks, months, years is it going to take before action is taken? And let me just say, as a licensed provider, if I had any of that material, I would have charges brought against me, DHHS would be involved, and I would have criminal charges brought against me. We are mandated to report, and so is every single person that works in a, in a public school department. This is considered pornography. And let me just tell you what else. You guys follow the CDC requirements? Well, have you checked out what the CDC has to say about child sexual abuse? Let me just read it. "Child sexual abuse refers to the involvement of a child, a person less than 18 years old, in sexual activity." And it goes on to say, basically, about 1 in 4 girls, 1 in 13 boys in the United States experience child sexual abuse. And it goes on also to say that showing pornography is considered child sexual abuse. That's from the CDC, okay? When you have children that have been sexually abused, this triggers them. You give them materials, and they, they're not prepared for it, it's traumatizing. Are we looking at that? I'm sure some of you have been through it. Unfortunately, statistically, some of you sitting on the school board probably have. Please consider that.
Karstya Karen from Wyndham. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. I spoke last-
I spoke last week. We are all here for our children. We're all concerned about what is happening in the school system and the garbage that you're introducing. Our, our minor children, 17, 18, underage children, and this is what they're getting from school. It's inappropriate. You're taking away parents' rights and choices to what they're being exposed to. When is it going to end? It's our right to teach this stuff to our children if we so choose, not the school system. The school system is here to teach reading, writing, math, science, life skills. Get it together and do your job, and let the parents parent. And, and, and why is it that it's going to take four months for you to read this book and then come to a vote? School's going to be over. It's, it's going to carry into next year. We want answers. We want parents' choice, parents' rights. These are our children, not yours.
I'm Justin Wynott, a lifelong resident of Wyndham. My mother taught in this school system for 40 years. My grandfather also taught in Wyndham for a number of years. I attended Wyndham schools, and I also had two children attend Wyndham, both of which RSU 14 failed. The Wyndham school system used to be one of the best school systems in Maine, and yet here we are, a porn-pushing national disgrace of the educational system. This district has become entrenched with communist, socialist, and Marxist bad actors trying to destroy our families and our community. The Marxist and communist agenda clearly states that pushing porn upon the people will help ensue their agenda. RSU 14 has been pushing this disgusting and harmful content on innocent children for many years. It has been destroying the mental health and well-being of countless students. Thankfully, my oldest has graduated, and I've been homeschooling my youngest child for the last two years, since my wife and I noticed the communist, socialist, and Marxist curriculum indoctrinating our first grader. Because of the atrocious policies enacted by this board, our son was falling behind. But after one year of homeschooling, he tested at a 99 percentile in math and social studies. Until this school district is completely overhauled and becomes focused on educating our children, I implore everyone in this district, before it is too late, pull your children from RSU 14. Thank you, and may God have mercy on your souls.
My name is Ken Anderson. No man or governing authority, whether it be town officials, state officials, the President of the United States, the Chief of Police, or the dog catcher, is going to tell me that the pornographic material being distributed in public education or any material like it is a benefit to help shape and promote healthy-minded individuals. And unless we remove this trash from our lives, we will never have a wholesome, loving society that seeks to foster the betterment of ourselves or those around us. We do not need to hold a license to use sound reasoning as to why this can and does affect our culture in neurological, psychological, and physiological terms, and leads only to the detriment of humanity. Most marriages are undone because of deep problems with underlying immoral behavior, which is usually sexual in nature, and cloaked over by shame. This is a communicable disease, and when left untreated, develops into a virus that spreads into the heart of homes and neighborhoods and is crippling our nation. If you do not have a problem with this in your life, and you are aware of someone who does, and you don't help that person, then you are culpable for their transgression, and God will judge you harshly. And here's a thought: When people allow this into their lives, it weakens the mind to a point of subjection to it, furthering that person to a position of dependence on it. Since we all can associate ourselves with being dependent on something, then you get what I'm talking about. Once the mind is fixed on this appetite of delusional thinking, and you will do anything to get it. In fact, the viewing of this is an accelerant for rapes, murders, and malice of forethought. This kind of illicit material turns to destructive behavior for the individual, and eventually, if not dealt with, will soon bring that person to a place of utter moral decay. Quite often, turns to substance abuse and anger, and despair sets in, and for some, the taking of the life God has given them. I mean, just think of why prisons are full. Look at the problems it has caused in the papacy. It tears a soul apart and causes degradation to all of society. And in fact, I would argue that it is a reason for the collapse of the Roman Empire. It brings war into the institution of families. It weakens the marriage bed and crushes the human spirit. If you want to be kind, like all the signs that are displayed on the law and depict, then get rid of whatever is robbing you of joy. And here's the thing about joy: You can't earn it. It is given to you by God by having a pure mind, which leads to a pure heart, which promotes a people who tell the truth, and the truth is love. Thank you, Jesus.
Hi, my name is Julie Clifford, and I did speak last week. I, standing up here is so nerve-wracking. Like, you just don't really know if your words are going to be misinterpreted or misconstrued. And so, it's super vulnerable for everybody to get up here, and I want to acknowledge that. I also want to acknowledge that I have friends sitting right here. I also have friends sitting over there. And I'm sitting in the middle of all of this. Why? Because I agree that if we are truly talking about these books, these two books in question are not age-appropriate. I also agree that books in schools need to be inclusive, inclusive of all genders and sexual preferences. It's okay to be an ally of the LGBTQ community, but also agree that these books are not age-appropriate. And I know that, because that's how I feel. I want to address a comment that someone made last week about a non-binary transgender student killing themselves. I personally and publicly need to apologize to that person for not standing up for them in that moment. I don't even know if they're here tonight, but I personally did hear the comment, and I feel so awful about not turning around and protecting a human life, because that's why we're all here right now, is to protect human life. We are all human. We need to come together to be an example to our children of kindness, empathy, respectful communication, and love. And so, to the board, I ask that you remove these books due to the age-inappropriate images and content in them. And I wasn't sure I was going to share this until, I forgot her name, but the director of Joyful Noise shared this, that I am a victim of sexual abuse, and when I was nine years old, if I had picked up this book or a friend had showed me this book, I would have been incredibly triggered. And so, I just asked that you take people like me into consideration that don't have that choice or have friends that might share those things. As an adult, I read this book, and I wasn't triggered, but I am triggered by things still. I don't watch certain TV shows. I wouldn't read certain books. Ask my husband. And so, I would just say, like, let's just remove the book for the sake of the kids. Thank you.
My name is Beth Taylor-Dore, and I am the only one here, I think, that's not from Wyndham. I live in Gorham. However, my son graduated from Wyndham High School with Kate's son, Andy, in 2010. His name is Jackson Taylor. I am really moved by what's happening in our community. I want to share with you my memory of the Wyndham Eagles. When my son was getting ready to go into his sophomore year of high school, his father was diagnosed with ALS. My husband, my late husband. This community banded together, and Kate can attest to this. And they surrounded my son with love and support, and my family. And many of you know that he was the quarterback of the state champion football team back in 2009. It was a very special time. Those boys, I still remember most of their names. It was, I looked up pictures of it yesterday. I'm so sad to see the division that's happened, because I know the love in this community. Jackson was even invited to be the speaker at your 2022 commencement exercises last year. He's a special boy. I have such love for this community, even though I live in Gorham now. And because of that love that I have, it's very hard, because I, like the lady over here spoke, was brought up with red and yellow, black and white, they are precious in his sight. I absolutely believe that. I don't care what gender a child is. I don't care about any of that. However, these books and some of the things that are happening, it's so far beyond reading and writing and science. I just don't understand how these books, that I feel devalue children. They're devaluing trans children, gay children, lesbian children. I implore you, as someone who loves the Wyndham Eagles more than you'll ever know, please, please, remove any of the teaching or that goes along with this. Support the kids, absolutely. This isn't about banning. This is about removing something and making it because it's not age-appropriate. There is no doubt in my mind that this is pornography. I can't get those images of some of those books out of my mind, and I can't stand the thought of a young child or someone that's been sexually abused, looking at that and having it be a trigger to them.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Somebody coming down? Here she comes.
Hi, my name's Victoria. I'm a senior at Wyndham High School. This will be about my 10th year at the school, and I just wanted to say a couple of things. My first thing is just really quick about the bathrooms. Trans people probab, like, oh, okay, hold on, let me just read off. Sorry. So this stuff doesn't happen in the bathrooms. Most people, including myself and my trans friends, use the single-person bathrooms anyway. That's more about the vaping and the kids skipping class problem than all that. If somebody wants to drop their pants in a bathroom, a rule about trans students isn't going to stop them, because I doubt they care about the rule. That kind of stuff is only going to tell the queer community that we are unsupported. The other thing I would like to point out, that yes, this is an attack on the queer community, and I know that because of the books I've had to read for my English class, A Thousand Splendid Signs, I had to read. My summer before freshman year, and that has, like, marital sexual violence. It was horrible. It was terrifying. The Great Gatsby talks about drinking and talks about sex. Sid Hartha had a scene with a man kissing a woman's breasts. The Things They Carried has extreme gore. Like, all of these books are part of my English curriculum, and all the points being made about porn and inappropriate material are very valid, but why is every book that we are talking about queer? I encourage everybody to recognize that this is an attack on the queer community, even if it's accidental and unintentional. To remove these books is to tell the queer community that we are not supported by our own town, and it's going to validate all of the anti-LGBTQ+ bullying and make the lives of me and my friends incredibly harder than how hard students have it now with just a book on the shelf that they don't even have to read. The other thing that I would like to bring up is the fact that we do need to make the school a safe place for LGBTQ+ people, because, like, I have friends who feel so unsafe at home because of their LGBTQ+ identity, that they have a go-bag under their bed. Can we at least make them feel at home at school when they don't feel at home at home? Doing this kind of stuff literally brings down suicide rates. Like, I'm not kidding. Like, I have some friends, and I know for a fact that the reason their self-harm isn't worse is because they know school is a place where they can come and be themselves. Please, just don't attack the queer community. Let's keep our school a safe place for me and my friends. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Frank Emery. I'm from Raymond. We don't presently have kids in the school district. We had two that we took out after sixth grades because of bullying, and we wound up putting them in private schools and homeschooled. But we don't have kids in school now, but I'm still a taxpayer, and it's terrible for us to pay the amount of taxes that we do each year and find out that the kids are doing terrible in school. That's the whole deal. If you get all this money, why are they getting not passing grades in the grades that they're sitting in?
Hi, my name is Bob Sparling. I live in Raymond also. We have three children, and we actually worked extra jobs to put them through a private school, because the school system we were in was more interested in other activities. And I think one of the problems now with the way things are funded is, public school is actually a monopoly, a business monopoly, because you're guaranteed tax funds. And if there was a voucher program where you did not get that funding, and people went to a private school, and you were run like a business, you'd be put out of business. Now, public schools aren't, have a minor problem, or actually is maybe a major problem. You have to cater to every class of student. You have to deal with these students that have no interest and just want to slide through. You have people that have behavioral problems. You have people that have social problems that you have to cater to. When we sent our children to a public school, actually to a private school, the principal the first night said, "There's a mandatory parent, a parent attendance, and if you don't show up for the, for the attendance meeting before school starts, then don't send your school here." Furthermore, there was always parent support of the school system, the private school system, and they were very strict, and you had to behave. Now, those are issues that probably, probably public schools have problems with. I was a substitute teacher for a while, and the behavior in the classrooms was atrocious. So I think if you had a voucher program, you'd be more careful as to what you were teaching and how you were handling your students. As far as the way books are approved, I was reading, trying to read through your website as quickly as I could, and it looked like the superintendent is supposed to review the book list or delegate authority to someone else to review the book list. But that's as far as I got through. The thing is whether the books were actually signed off, or whether it was a comment form saying why the books were approved. I personally don't think the genderqueer agenda is appropriate for the school system. I think it's a way of dividing the student body up. I think it's, for the, for the students that are seeking an identity, they, they morph into that group that gives them some identity, and that's why it's becoming such a, a big discussion point right now. I think the schools should get back to, as Frank said, the major things, the reading, writing, arithmetic. When I was in, doing substitute teaching, the students were dismally dumb. I mean, I would ask basic math questions in eighth grade that they couldn't handle. It's atrocious what the students are learning, and they're just not prepared for real life when they get out. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening? I don't, okay?
Adam Zijak. I'm a Wyndham resident. A month ago, I came here to speak, and I told you I'd be a thorn in your sides. And here I am, I'm still poking at you guys. You know, I never meant for this to get national coverage, but it did, and we're going to take advantage of it until the school system starts straightening up and listening to the community. It's really sad, because I keep having to talk to my son about this, and the conversations we have are really pretty unreal, because this is actually- we have are really pretty unreal because this is actually an interview, just a snippet. He gave the closing thoughts at an interview last night on national news. I just want to play it for you.
Honestly, I think it's common sense to not add pornography in schools. You say those words to yourself, pornography in schools. Now, after you say that, how does that make you feel? Does it make you feel like it should be in schools or not? That's how I would feel about this.
Now, I love this community. My grandmother lived here ever since I was a young baby. I grew up in Greve, so I've been here for 41 years. I love the kids of this community. I coach these kids in this community, and I want nothing but the best for Wyndham and for the Eagles to soar, all right? There's no reason that we can't be the best we can be and have children that come out of here and succeed straight out of high school. Right now, it's really disappointing to see what's happening in the education system. And I just want you to know, until this gets figured out, I will keep doing national news interviews, and I already have two lined up for tomorrow. I want to say this, though. I would love to give one happy story where I can tell them that you guys all smartened up and realized the wrongs that we're doing on our children and make it right. So give me the opportunity to bring great news and great words about the Wyndham community and RSU 14.
Yes.
That's all I have to say.
Courtney Post-Vanderberg, Wyndham resident, parent, and educator. I would just like to say thank you to the board and the community for coming out to support the Unified Basketball Team last night, winning their last game.
Beth Hall, longtime Wyndham resident. I just want to say for the third time that Wyndham really needs to be the model, the model for all the districts in the area and the state of Maine to follow. If we become the school that decides what's right and not what's wrong, make everybody aware that they need to be respectful and love each other, no matter what gender they are. We just have to get these pornography books out of our school system for these children and pay attention to the age appropriateness. Wyndham needs to be the model so that we can maybe, like Zach said, be national for the right reasons and not the wrong ones. And the committee that selects these books or that you're going to review for these books, last week I was a little upset that only one parent was supposed to be on that board, and I really feel that there should be at least one parent, if not two parents, from every school in the district, and an unbiased lottery so that the parents are picked, and that means like an extra 10 or 12 people on your committee. And I think that's the way it should go because it needs to be a truthful committee and a unbiased committee. So let Wyndham be the model.
Thank you. I'm looking around. Anyone else would like to speak? I don't see any here movement. I don't want to shut it off if somebody wants to speak, but I don't see anyone getting up. So this concludes public comment. Thank you all.